Please call the rule.
Hey, William.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
That's it.
Councilmember Snipper.
There.
Councilmember Wright.
I believe both councilmembers Barry and Wright will be here. Does any councilmember have any comments? I'll just make two quick ones that there were two events yesterday that were excellent. One of them was the first annual Tacoma Park 5K run, which was the 5K run, the one-mile run, and the quarter-mile run. And even though it was raining through a good bit of it, there was a high degree of participation. I think there were over 300 people who ran, among them, Councilmember Wright. And a lot of people had a real good time, and a lot of people who hadn't necessarily been in this building were in here and enjoying it at, I guess, about seven o'clock on a Sunday morning. And then later yesterday afternoon, the house and garden tour put on by His Dark Tacoma also had to deal with rain, but there were a lot of people who were going around touring all the houses on Block 69 at Byron Montgomery College, and that was enjoyable as well. So, any other comments from anybody who's just come in? Councilmember Wright?
I just want to say that I'm very thankful to the city staff because I just found the event on Sunday that I think was supposed to school fun run great and classified a number of volunteers that were engaged in the police department and community planning and development, housing, community planning and development department. It was just fabulous, so I'm very thankful.
And I guess we should also ask that they coordinated it with four elementary schools as well, and there was a great deal of participation from the elementary schools. Anybody else? Okay. There are no additional agenda items, I guess, other than the fact that since we were last here, we've added, it's not an additional agenda item, it's future agenda, we added a budget work session this Thursday night, which is the 7th, May 7th, which was not on the original agenda. Now we're to public comment period for anybody who'd like to make any comments on anything that is on the agenda, anything that's not on the agenda. And if you could keep your, if you could identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. I'm glad to be back here at the council meeting. I felt like a fish out of water for the last month and a half. I was in the hospital and everything, and now I seem to be doing much better. But first things I want to do is, one of our asked council, have they ever written that letter to invite President Obama to our folk festival and our children's festival? Because I think that would be great if we could have the president meet our children here in Tacoma Park, because that would really give the kids an incentive to grow up and be on the straight and narrow, and it'd be a great way to have a lasting memory for the kids that will last us for all their lives. And I think it'd be great if Tacoma Park, since we are an activist community, we should be able to invite our president down to, down to the festival since we voted for him. Second thing I want to do is wish Terry Siemens a happy birthday, which was May the 2nd. I wasn't here last week to wish him and sing happy birthday because I was sick last week. And I want to tell him a happy 63rd birthday. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Terry, happy birthday to you, best one on World Hall. Also, Sunday is Mother's Day, and I want to invite everybody, if possible, to come down to Lafayette Park that day. We're going to be having a peace demonstration, you know, like we do every year. It's a great way to respect your mothers, to swear out violence, and to dedicate yourself to peace, and to bring your family and friends down to that. We're going to have a really good event down there, we do every year. And also, I want to wish Councilman Snipper a speedy recovery, because I know what it's like to be laid up all the time, and I want to wish him, I want to wish him a speedy recovery. My heart goes out to you, Mr. Snipper, my heart goes out to you.
Thank you very much, Pat, hope you're back.
Yep, and remember, I may be loveless, but that's when I'm full of love, don't forget it, because I know what it's like, I can fully identify you with you, Mr. Snipper, and I'm looking forward to you coming back. Okay, thank you very much. Remember, come on down to our peace activities. And also, I want everybody to call up Joyce Siemens on Sunday and wish her a happy Mother's Day, because she's the mother of Tacoma Park. She spreads her love everywhere. She has done a lot for Franklin Apartments, she's done a lot for the people who need her the most, and she's really set an example for our city. Okay, it's Happy Mother's Day, Joyce Siemens, Happy Mother's Day. And I want everybody who hears me to call her up and wish her a Happy Mother's Day. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Peace.
Do I just begin?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Leah Chertalk. I live at 6414 Sligo Mill Road, which is behind the proposed car wash, the development of which the council is going to hear a proposal on tonight. I am not opposed to development or redevelopment along New Hampshire Avenue, but I do have a number of concerns about this particular proposed commercial enterprise that I hope that the council will take into consideration when it considers this proposal. First of all, the traffic study talks about 16 cars, backup being available on-site on the car wash, but if you've gone down on a Saturday or Sunday morning where a lot of commercial car washes are, especially in the spring, there's usually a backup into the street. 16 cars is not sufficient, and so there's a potential for congestion on New Hampshire Avenue. I'm also concerned about the fact that in the original master plan, that section, that piece parcel from Orchard to New Hampshire was considered part of the right-of-way, and there was going to be, at one point, I think, a pedestrian access to New Hampshire. If the car wash is put there, it would block pedestrian access. I'm concerned about the noise from the car wash itself, which, unlike the noise of general traffic moving along New Hampshire Avenue, is a specific noise source that's very close to the neighbor there. I'm also concerned about the fact that whatever additional emissions result from cars idling on this site will be one-half block away from the new community garden, which is supposed to be opening, I think, on the 16th of May, if I'm correct. And finally, the commercial development as proposed is not neighborhood-friendly to the citizens of Tacoma Park, which I was under the impression was one of the goals of the council in promoting new businesses on New Hampshire. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Bridget Bowers. I live on West Moreland Avenue. I first wanted to thank the council for putting in place the traffic calming measures in Pine Crest. We've seen a noticeable difference since the speed bumps and various other speed tables, et cetera, have been put in place. So I wanted to thank the council and also thank Alona for all of her help in getting that together in Pine Crest, so thank you. Second, I wanted to echo some of the same things that Leah was saying so eloquently, so I won't repeat everything that she'd said, but the Neighborhood Association has some very serious concerns about the car wash going in on New Hampshire Avenue, notably because of traffic spillover into the neighborhood, traffic backup on New Hampshire Avenue, pedestrian safety, and we also feel that it's not in line with the vision of our neighborhood or with the New Hampshire Avenue charrette that had occurred some months ago. So again, just echoing what Leah had so eloquently mentioned, but we additionally, as an association, have major concerns. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Rosalind Grigsby. I'm executive director of the Old Tacoma Business Association. I come before you tonight with some good news to share. I wanted to let you know that OTBA has been working with the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association and two ANC commissioners for a public art project at the Tacoma Metro Station. And in April, the DC Arts and Humanities Commission announced that they've accepted our project. They've allocated $260,000 for a mural on the underpass. They will put out a national call for artists in the next couple of months, and if all goes smoothly, in about 18 months, the installation should be complete. We asked for the two, we asked for the underpass, we asked for the two side walls and the median columns and piece as well. We expected them to come back and say, that's too much, you have to whittle it down. I haven't seen the details of their, it's now their project, which makes me very happy. But I wanted to say it is a go, and you'll probably be seeing the information on the call for artists in the next two months.
Congratulations.
Roz, would you just make sure that Byron Peck sees that? He's a renowned DC muralist, the gentleman who's painting the mural on the side. I'm sure he will, but just to make sure they're in the loop that he should compete for that if he's interested because he's very talented.
I will. When I see it, I'll also circulate it on all the city sites that I know of. It's also worth mentioning that Byron Peck has started his work on the mural at 7056 Carroll Avenue. If you've been by lately, the scaffolding is all love, the prep work is done, so that project is moving ahead as well, so.
Good.
Small town with big art. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. The city manager, have any comments?
No, I do not.
Okay. Then we will move to the scheduled presentation on the New Hampshire Avenue Car Wash Development Project.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And if you just want to make sure with your big pile of stuff, that the paper doesn't get over onto the microphone, because it makes big noise. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have here Mr. Claudio Joseph, two husbands, who are going to present a proposed car wash at 6415 New Hampshire Avenue, currently a vacant lot at the, on New Hampshire Avenue adjacent to American Pest Management.
What I wanted to present to you, it's in fact, an existing car wash. In fact, this new car wash would be exactly the same as the ones that exist. The one that exists, exists, is located in Washington DC on Wisconsin Avenue. Yeah, is that right? On Wisconsin Avenue, and has, is located between an office of the Taiwanese Embassy and a building that is owned by a developing company called Bernstein. It's a known company. And the back of it leads to several houses, residences, residential areas in the back. This area here that is shown in the plans of existing car wash is, has 60 feet, 60 feet wide, in 160 feet in depth. The one, the ones that we are proposing here is 60 feet wide and 175 feet deep, it's 15 feet longer. We do not intend to use Sligo Creek except for emergency or for collection of our, of garbage collections. That's the only, and on the back of it would be otherwise, except for that driveway where the truck comes to pick up the garbage, there would be a curtain of trees that we would put around it. We have, let's, the location is in fact called Chevy Chase DC. And we are in a, in a street that is, has probably as much or more traffic during the days than the New Hampshire Avenue, except for the peak periods where the traffic in New Hampshire is quite, quite important. So I would like you to see the first, is the first page is the site plan, and I just would like to show there that it's 60 feet by 160, and the site plan would be very similar of these ones that exist. There would be maybe, the building would be 10 feet longer, but the rest would, cars would come on the right and would turn and leave on the left, the same way that is one of the pictures that depicts the, the traffic inside of the, of the site. There will be a canopy like it is there, and that can be seen in the two pictures that are on the back. Since they were taken, these pictures were taken with a zoom lens, it doesn't provide the idea of how many cars can park on the front of the building, as it can park exactly six cars. In that particular car wash, we can stack 15 cars, which is what the District of Columbia establishes that is a need for having a car wash. A car wash needs to have 15 cars to stack, which in the case of, before getting into the tunnel. In the case of this proposed car wash, there will be more than 15 cars that can be stacked, probably because of these 15 feet longer, another two cars, so there would be 17 that would be easily stacked on the site. We have not confronted any problem on Wisconsin Avenue. Yes, in probably six days a year, there may be a small line on, on, on Wisconsin. The District of Columbia likes the idea of having these car washes because it has another car wash in Connecticut Avenue, which had been grandfathered and has exactly, you enter from the street into the tunnel, so there is no stacking possibility. And so to reduce and dilute the number of cars on the, on this area, they felt it was a good thing to have these car washes being built, because it would reduce the amount of cars that are going to the, the competition to the other car wash. In the case of, in this case, there are two car washes close, one in Tacoma Park, further closer to Langley Park, and, and there is another one on Riggs Road, so that, in Prince George's County. But we have never confronted a problem, and we have in fact presented to the Department of Transportation, is it the Department of Transportation? Park and Planning. We presented the whole, all our information that we had for a year that was the worst year, 2007, because 2008 there was a lot of more precipitation, so the, the car wash didn't have the problems. The problem occurs only when, when it's a very dry period. We, car washes work exactly opposite to, to the agricultural sector. We need dry weather, and they need rain. Obviously, it's better to have. I am from background, I am a biophemist and a chemical engineer, probably very few car wash owners that are biophemists and chemical engineers, and I did an MBA later on. And I worked for a company that's not very well-liked, doucheney company, but then I did something good, and I got to be a good, do better, and worked for the World Bank. So, worked for 14, almost 14 years for the World Bank. So, I did all, everything possible, so I am now in, in the car wash business. But we have confronted also the situation of the noise, and the only problem that we had is that we, we learned from these processes. We had a certain equipment that was producing a noise that was a little bit higher than acceptable by DCRA in DC, and so we changed the equipment and put a new equipment since the beginning. So we had an equipment that noise is not a great problem. The other problem with car washes is that people many times run without a uniform, look dirty, that is, that I would like to say, you are all invited to go to the car wash and see it, and, and look at it. It's on 5020, 5020 Wisconsin Avenue, Chevy Chase DC. It's between Fessenden Street and, in the middle of the block, between Fessenden Street and Garrison Street. And we are in areas that is, has some, is not high rises, but has a lot of buildings around it, and we haven't caused any trouble, and you can get in touch with ANC there and find out if there is any things that is, has caused in the past, that has caused some worries to the people that are around the communities around it. As a contrary, people of the community like our car wash. We have had clients for 11 years that live all around the area and have seen the children grow from, from, from small to, to teenagers. So I, I must say that I don't, I'm open to any questions that we may have, but that is the situation. Obviously, you can't see anything today because it's just the grass field there, but I think that is exactly what I, my intention is to do exact same type of car wash we have there. So if somebody visits the site, we will see what the new car wash would be. The difference is, we are not located between a gas station and a, and a pest control company. We, we have a little bit neighbors that are probably tougher in their, in accepting a car wash than these, than pest control in a, in a. I know that there is a concern of, of the neighbors buying Sligo Creek, and I have heard the ladies talk about it, but they don't need to be concerned about, about noise. Noise is not the problem, and there will be nobody getting into Sligo Creek from the car wash, except for the garbage trucks that is picking up the garbage there. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. It's always exciting to have presentations by businesspeople who are interested in coming to Tacoma Park. I have several questions, and they're all related, and they concern the environment. First question is, and I think it refers to one of the public comments, is the idling of cars while waiting for their turn to enter the thing, to what extent is, is that, may that idling be a problem, especially with carbon monoxide? Second, what happens to the water that is recycled with the suds and so forth? Where does it go? And to what extent are car washes more efficient or less efficient than people washing their own cars? And then the third related question is, to what degree do you propose, or might you entertain ideas for making the building itself green? Tacoma Park has been a leader in the protection of the environment, in developing ideas to reduce the carbon footprint and make our buildings more efficient. So to what extent is this going beyond, you know, a mere box with, with quiet machinery to where it might be an environmentally correct operation?
Responding, I will start from the end to the first one. The question of recycling, we have a recycling equipment, we are probably the only one in DC that has a recycling facility. We have not been using it all the time because it's a very efficient system, but we have not been using it all the time because of the fact that it's cheaper to buy the water than to process the water. Our recycling equipment we use is, provides us that about 75% of the water goes back to the, to the operation, and, and little amount of soap remains in that water, but it's reused, so it doesn't, it's recycled in the process. We, we don't have any problem with oil. We have, the only problem is that, is in our case, that we haven't been using it all the time because of the need for having somebody, and we have now a mechanic that is part of our operation, that would need to do the proper changes, because you need the proper person to, to be doing. I was doing it myself, but I came to the conclusion that my time was not being well used, and I had the engine, is a mechanic, and, and we noticed that the cost, energy costs were higher than to buy. But obviously, in a situation, any time that there is a request from the DC government, you must use it all the time. We are the only ones that can, that can do that, because you need to have all these tanks and, and facilities inside that provide you, you cannot redo and put tanks in a site, particularly in DC where the sites are small, you cannot do, put in all these tanks without stopping the whole operation for at least six months, and, and so nobody is probably excited in doing so. But we have the, we have three very large tanks, and we have also inside of the tunnel a sedimentation system that we take, the water stays very deep into the, in the tank, in the tanks that are inside of the tunnel, and then they are taken out and they are carried by garbage trucks. So this is what, what happens with our sediments. Going to the system.
Can I, can I? Good evening, Anthony Hespons. In terms of the green desire, I'm finding that a lot of the people that I'm working with now are trying to be LEED certified, as a result of which, you know, we have had to, over the past year, to begin to adjust our designs in terms of the climate management and these other issues. At, at, in the conceptual stage of this, we, what we did not think green, however, because of the size and the type of roof that we're, that we're, that is planned for this structure, a green roof would be, could be easily accommodated if, if, if that is, if that is, if that is one of the, if that is desirable. In discussion with Mr. Joseph, I think we are, we do not want to create an eyesore. We know the issues of car washes. You see, I've, I've come to George Avenue, and there is, is a car wash just off the Beltway that has issues. When I used to live up here, there is another car wash up on New Hampshire Avenue, and I think that that's the, the one that the, you know, that's the And I think that that's the, the one that the, you know, that's the poster child for what a car wash should not be like. I was a moment working on the Red Top Gas Station and Car Wash at the corner of New Hampshire and, and, um, on East West Highway. I, fortunately or unfortunately, that is in Prince George's County. But I have the, I have the responsibility of shepherding that through also. But in terms of the green, in terms of the green, the only thing that we can do now, there are two things that we can do. One is that we have, we won't, we will comply with all of the landscaping and green requirements of the ordinances. And as Mr. Joseph said, it, we would like to put up a buffer of trees from the, from the edge of the paved area in the back, um, to, to Sligo Mill, so that it creates, it acts the two things. It provides green and it also acts as a buffer. Um, it's important for us that we do provide that buffer. And we can look at the, when we come to the, um, site plan, site development stages and architectural, you know? I, we can, I, I would recommend that we consider significantly a green roof. And, you know, if you guys want to include that as one of your recommendations, um, as a condition of approval, I would think it would be, it is doable. It just happens that the first green roof in Montgomery County we did, that's next to the Silver Spring next road, One Front and Fenton. So, we have some experience at, at, at the green roof, um, these things. So, um, there is recycling with regards to another, the other issue with regards to, to the water usage. As Mr. Joseph said just now, um, physically, at the end of the day, we have to, they, because he's experienced in it, um, they have to remove the sludge by manual methods. Seventy-five, eighty percent of the water is recyclable. Um, the rest, you know, there is an approved stormwater management plan, which was, which was, um, very, it was, you know, we had a lot of to-ing and fro-ing with the engineer for the city of Tacoma Park before we, we got, before the, before the stormwater management, um, issues were approved. And this has been done for a while. So, uh, we, we had a lot of input from, from your, from your staff, um, with regards to the, the stormwater management aspects of it.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your, uh, your views on this and your ideas. And certainly, I don't mean to suggest that we, or I, in a condition of support, would suggest that you have to find a way to power the entire city with soap suds. On, on the other hand, you know, I think we are looking for, or I am looking more, for more than just a box with sprinklers. And I think, uh, to, to the extent that you can, uh, think about and offer some ways to present a, a structure that goes significantly beyond the property that you mentioned on New Hampshire, which I think, you know, you're, you're right. It seems like a sort of stereotypical kind of car wash operation that you find in the area. Certainly, I would be very interested in hearing about that. Just, thanks, thank you.
See, uh, my, I, I didn't discuss these initial idea with, with Andrews. But, uh, my idea was, since I couldn't put a solar panels at the location in DC because they're between two buildings and we have lesser, uh, amount of light coming to the, solar light coming into the car wash. I had been discussing with, uh, with the consultant of, uh, solar energy about putting solar cells on the, on the top roof and reduce the amount of, uh, of energy that we would be using. Apparently, it's quite substantial, uh, that the amounts that we could gain with that.
I was, in, in vision that I just came back from Barbados and, alright, sorry, I just came back from Barbados. And I was pleasantly surprised, you know, I pick up audio and that. I, I was pleasantly surprised at the amount, admittedly these Barbados, and so the sun is there all the time. But at the amount of solar, um, panels that there are, and the, 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 the only purpose is to heat water. They're not powering their houses, but they just have these little, um, solar panels and, you know, it's, it's, you just see them so many times. If it's something that we can do, it's something that we, we, we can look at.
No questions? That's what we're answering.
Hi.
Good afternoon, good evening, sir.
I, um, I have a, some kind of technical questions. I'd like to understand better what, how it all works. First of all, well, I'll, I'll start with the trees. There are four trees there. Looks to me on the plan that it's mostly drive around and drive through. So, I'm not sure I see how you get trees behind, but, um, um, I guess maybe you could put it back there.
Where we say, where we say green area, um...
I'm trying to see it on the, oh, I see, green area. Between the circle and Sligo Mill Road itself.
Right, so that is supposed to be a green area. And, you know, it's for us to determine what green goes there. As, as, as Claude is saying, he'd like to have a buffer of trees there.
Right, but you haven't presented that in the plan.
The noise is just a vision of seeing a facility from the back. It's not, the noise is not, is not...
Okay, so I, I think I get the trees. What's the DB level of the noise on the older equipment that you had said that was inappropriate and the newer equipment? In other words, how loud is it?
The, uh, we were with, uh, something like close to fifty-five DB.
Fifty-five?
Yeah. And, uh, they felt it was too high. And we reduced it, uh, I think almost to half of it.
Like thirty or something like, thirty, thirty, thirty-five?
So, we are very, uh, we, nobody feels the noise from the car wash, from any of the residential areas behind it, exists, so...
And is that thirty-five right next to the building or is it some distance from the building? Is there...
Oh, yeah, no, they, they made the measurements from, uh, close to the building.
Close to the building?
Around the building, yeah.
Okay. The, let's see if I, let's see if I understand this. If you use the recycling, then you get the sediment? Is that the case?
No, we get the sediment anyway.
You get the sediment anyway?
If we don't have the recycling equipment, we, we do, uh, we have several tanks of sedimentation.
And these are the tanks that you lift out and carry to the garbage?
No, we, we, we need to take it, shovel it out with a special shovel that goes and takes it like that.
And where does that sediment then go?
And that goes to, to our garbage company.
Okay. So, it's taken to the landfill by a...
Yeah, to, yeah.
So, the, is the garbage company, is your ordinary garbage truck that comes and then the shovels put it in the back of the garbage truck, sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
And so, when it comes out and then it's put in some container? And then the container is put in the garbage truck?
It's a garbage truck, yeah.
And that container is a plastic bucket or something like that?
Yeah, it's a plastic bucket, one of these large plastic buckets.
And do you have any idea how much a sediment's generated a week or a month?
No, I don't. We, we clean it once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah. But we have also, uh, any sediment that passed the, the, the tank goes to the three other tanks. And we have, once a year, we have a truck, of these trucks that you see, these large trucks that are vacuum trucks, that get into the tanks and pull all the sediment out.
I see, a full cleaning of those tanks?
Yeah, that is a whole...
Alright, and, and the wastewater, the water that does go out? I see in the, in the plan here that it looks like it links into the stormwater system. Okay, and, um, what's, how clean is that water when it gets to the stormwater? Because that goes directly to, in this case, the Tacoma branch, which is, I suspect, right down, right down the hill. So, what, how clean is that water when it comes out? I, I know it's been through a sudsing process. Do you have a filtration system which takes the suds out or how does that work?
The suds are reused. Obviously, a little bit of suds will, may come out with, with the process. I would need to, to find out exactly how much of suds would be...
I mean, I mean, it's, you have sudsy water washing the car.
Yeah.
Right? And it takes off the grit. And all of that material goes into a, a filtration system and the sediment, um, builds up inside these tanks, right? And then the water, which was sudsy, has some overflow system and gets into the stormwater system. And so, I'm wondering what kind of, what's the process whereby that sudsy water becomes clean before it goes into the, before it goes into the stormwater system?
The water in the case of DC goes into the system of, uh, uh, not of the stormwater, goes into the sewer.
Well, it's a bike, that's a, it's a, it's a combined system in DC.
Yeah.
Most of the place, so it ends up being stormwater. I mean, it's, it's not an easy answer, I understand. But in our case, here, we have separate systems for sewer and stormwater. And it sounds, it looks like here, that all that, um, that excess water will go into the stormwater system, if I understand that right.
It's, Andrew, is that correct?
Yeah, there, there is, um, when I'm actually looking at this here, there, there is a provision, there ought to be some sort of a sand filter or some, there is some additional filtration before it goes into the water, into the, into the, um, into the...
Stormwater system.
Uh, Montgomery County does not allow us to. I mean, they say, actually, they may have gotten by with it because it was a year or year and a half ago. But Montgomery County will not allow, uh, us to, uh, any runoff unless it is filtered either by means of a dry well or by means of a, um, sand filter or some, someone, some type, someone. I think the, the issue here is that, um, we, we prepare this primarily just for, just for the sake of getting a preliminary plan approved.
Sure.
After which, we were going to do the detailed, um, engineering.
I'm concerned because that seems like a pretty central thing, your washing car with sudsy water and then it gets into the stormwater. So, I just, I'm trying to find some clarity on what happens between sudsy water and clean stormwater. So, it sounds like you're not there yet.
We're not, we're not there yet, but I can, in terms of getting a permit, well, I'm assuming we're getting a permit for Tacoma Park. I'm, I'm operating on the Montgomery County system. From April of two thousand and six, even the water that runs off the roof, we have to, for each residence, provide filtration before that water gets onto the street. So, I'm assuming that those conditions apply.
Okay, but you're not, you're not the engineer who would, who is designing that system?
I am, but we're not there yet.
Okay.
We're not there yet.
The car wash that I, as it is operating, has in the front, has a sand filter where all the suds pass through.
Okay.
From, from looking at your concept plan application, I'm not clear if this application is for stormwater or wastewater. And so, those may be treated as separate issues.
I see.
So, so it's, but it's not clear...
Yeah, it's, it's small type. Very small type on this one. Okay, so a, a couple of other things. What's the lifetime of a car wash? I mean, are you building this thing for ten years, twenty years, thirty years, forty years, what?
Hundred years.
Hundred years? Just asking. The garbage that comes...
It changes, obviously, the equipment changes, let's say. We are now eleven years on Wisconsin Avenue and we will, uh, revamp it. Probably is the next year, all this equipment will be changed, side of the tunnel.
The garbage, you mentioned garbage pickup. There's not a lot of garbage, other than the sand, other than the grit filters. I can't see that there'd be a lot of garbage generated by, by a...
Out of people's cars.
Yes.
Oh, ah! So, you do a cleaning and a vacuuming and all that stuff?
Yeah. Open garbage, you just generate it.
Okay, just ask.
I, I see it come out into the barrels as people head in.
Got it. I, I want to, I'm kind of firing questions because I know my colleagues may have questions too and I don't want to take too much time here. So, that's the reason I'm kind of peppering you, alright? I think a, a very big concern in the neighborhood and, and for others is the backup. So, you have sixteen cars you can stack or maybe seventeen. I've seen the car wash at Holton Lane back way down New Hampshire Avenue. And that's far more than sixteen cars. And then it goes around Holton, then it goes in, and then it winds around and comes through. I may, I see fifty cars there from time to time. So, the concern is, you'll get the sixteen backed up and then you'll get another ten or twenty or whatever going down New Hampshire Avenue. And I'm not a traffic planner, but, um, it, it concerns me some that that would be the case. And also, and I don't know what the transportation planners will say when they come across that. So, I just want to throw that out there.
My response to that is that there are going to be five or six or seven days of the year in which that happens after snow. That's like, you know, there is no way of getting away from that. But the rule would be that based on, um, his experience and what we've looked at in, in, in Wisconsin Avenue and that sort of thing, that sixteen, sixteen car backup, that does not include the four or five that are all already through the line in the, in the tunnel. So, you know, in fact, you're talking about twenty to twenty-two cars or something like that. So, um, it's something that, you know, we will have to, or Mr. Joseph will have to, 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 to work with. In the, in the traffic study, they felt that it was not, you know, we, we weren't going to be traffic, um, significantly. It also, we also, there, there's also the issue of, he will, he will be able to do that better than I. And that's the, 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 the time of operation, the time of day.
You mean morning, evening, that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. If, if, if he's open from, at six o'clock, he's gonna have a problem. While if he opens at nine or nine-thirty, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a lot less of an issue than, 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 and that's, and, you know, if he closes at eight o'clock at night, where you have, you know, it's a different story.
Okay, um, you're aware that we did a big charrette along New Hampshire Avenue? Are you aware of that? Our city sponsored, spent some hundred thousand and more dollars on a super duper charrette. And we have some pretty snazzy documents which show, uh, New Hampshire Avenue redone with side streets and the main streets and islands in the middle and...
Unfortunately, though, that I'm sorry, I...
Okay, you haven't seen that?
I will not say, I will not sit there and say yes, and then you ask me another question and then you will...
Okay, well, the reason, okay, that's fine. The reason I bring it up, and it's not crucial that you have seen it, it's not crucial. But I bring it up because that's our vision for New Hampshire Avenue. That's what we'd like New Hampshire Avenue to be. And we, we, uh, we had our Department of Housing and Community Development spend a lot of time and energy and brought in many people from the community saying, here's how we want this, this New Hampshire Avenue, which right now runs sixty thousand cars a day, you know, maybe seventy thousand cars a day. We're trying to slow it down and make it really nice. And we've even used terms like Chauncey L'Isé, if you know what I'm talking about. In other words, a, a broad boulevard with lots of, um, retail and stuff like that. So, um, and who knows when we'll get to that, when that vision will become a reality? Nobody knows. Or if it will become a reality. But that is our vision that we've worked hard here to, to put, put out. And so, I think a lot of the concern in the neighborhood and also in, in, uh, from other sectors or from other directions is, gee, this, this kind of doesn't quite fit our grand design on New Hampshire Avenue. I'm just kind of putting that out there to let you know, okay? And I think that's all the questions I have. The green roof, you know, alright. The solar panels to heat the water, use warm water to wash, I'm sure?
Uh, we don't, but we use, uh, energy for other operations inside.
Okay.
So, that's why.
Okay, alright, one, one last question. If you'll, if my colleagues will bear with me for the last question here. How long does it take to detail a car? If somebody comes in, says, I want to wash in a detail, how long does the detailing take?
We keep the car for at least six hours. If the detail itself takes three to four hours.
And how many, and what percentage of people who bring in cars want them detailed?
Oh, very rare. It's not, not as many, no.
And, and what, my question's going into more than one, but what percentage just want a vacuum when they're done?
And that is, in a car wash like these, we don't take only for vacuuming. Because it needs to go the full cycle.
Well, if they go, how, what percentage go the full cycle and then get a vacuum?
All, uh, all of them.
Okay.
Almost all of them, ninety-nine percent.
Okay, and how long's a vacuum take? How long does that take?
That, uh, it takes from one minute to, to three minutes.
Okay.
Depends, let's say, we get, a lot of people don't go to our competition, want to have better vacuum and come to us.
I see.
So, we get larger SUVs and pickup trucks because of the fact of the, the constraints that the car wash on Wisconsin has, which is not the same situation as here. It would be a different situation.
Okay, so, and the, the wash itself takes a couple of minutes and then...
The wash itself, if you count, in the counting of cars, you do, in a minute and a half, in a, in a busy day, you do one car.
In a minute and a half?
In a minute and a half, you do one car.
Including the vacuuming or no?
Including the vacuuming. Because we have two lanes, which is also the case here. we would have two lanes, two cars would be coming at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
People normally have the idea that car washes are, always have these lines, and they feel, golly, that is a fantastic business, you, all of you should be, it's amazing how much money, but see, normally people only tend to see the days, it's, the car wash is full, that there is a line there, and the, the lines outside, I would say that probably it's, it's very rarely in a year, more than seven times a year, the lines outside, and the lines that we have outside may be, uh, eight to ten cars outside, and that only in certain periods of the day also, it's not, uh, people normally don't come to the car wash from eight to nine, most of the people come later than nine o'clock, and, and also the, in the end of the day, it's a rush hour, also lesser people come, so it is, we close at six-thirty, uh, six or six-thirty depending on the time of the year, and between five and six-thirty, it's a tremendous reduction of cars.
And will you be open on weekends?
We are open se- uh, seven days a week.
Okay, um, so, and your observation is that the car wash, it's car washing, most people come after rush hour in the morning and before rush hour begins in the afternoon, and on weekends probably too, for their free time. Okay, thank you for your patience with all my questions.
Councilmember Clay.
Um, I just have one question, and it's really for Alana. The street out in front of the car wash near Holton area, or whatever street that is that's up there, that street is owned by Montgomery County, but the street in front of this one is owned by Prince George's County.
Actually, the street in front of the car wash, Holton Lane is a city street.
Uh-huh.
And New Hampshire Avenue is technically a state street that's within Prince George's County.
Right, so my question is, can Tacoma Park Police write a ticket to people who were stacked up on New Hampshire Avenue for the car wash?
I can check into that, but I believe that the city police do have, um, an agreement or jurisdiction.
Yeah, because that, because one question I had was in terms of the map that's in the packet, it shows the county border in the middle of New Hampshire Avenue, and my understanding is that the, that the county line is actually on our side and includes the sidewalks, so that from the, from the property line out is all Prince George's, is that the case?
I'm not sure if it's the curb line or this, or the property line, but yes.
But it's either the curb line or the property line on our side.
Thanks, so, can you, can you just repeat that for me again, so that, that, that the Tacoma Park boundary is, is the.
The, the county, Prince George's County includes all of the, all of the pavement, both directions on New Hampshire Avenue.
Wow, all right, you'll correct that.
Um, Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming here tonight and your interest in some of the economic development here and, and bringing your business to Tacoma Park, I appreciate your looking at us, especially at that property, which is relatively small and, and has some challenges for other types of business. Um, I think as I look at your plans, I was concerned because it looks like just about every square inch of the property was designed to be paved and impervious space, uh, impervious surface, excuse me, so I appreciate your flexibility in considering some environmental improvements that would help to, to mitigate that. Uh, Mr. Husbands, I was recently in Jamaica, and I agree, I was really shocked at the amount of solar power that was being installed in many businesses down there and also in some of the homes for, for heating the water especially, but I think that's probably, maybe it a little bit more direct sun than we do here. Uh, I, you mentioned the, the buildings on either side and behind the Wisconsin Avenue facility, but I'm not sure I understood what is the nature of the, the neighbors of that facility?
Uh, behind, on the back of the building.
And on both sides?
There is a parking lot, and then there is, uh, it's an open space where, runs fascinant, sort of diagonally, and you have a distance to the neighbors that is very close to the distance we are here.
What's, what's, who's on, who's on either side of you?
Uh, in, in, is the sides are, is the Taiwanese, uh, the Taiwanese embassy, uh, office that they have in the building, a four-floor building, and the other side is a, is a commercial building, uh, with off, office building from Bernstein.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ray.
A few quick questions. First, I was wondering if the city staff could tell me what the increased tax revenue the city will get as a result of this project once it's built and done?
That hasn't been calculated yet, um, I'm not sure what the rate, I will calculate that as we move through the process though.
It'd be good to know that, kind of, I realize it's not, someone has to do what it ends up getting assessed at, right, so.
Um, can I interject for one moment on that point? Is this in a commercial re, uh, overlay zone?
Yes.
It's in the enterprise zone, no?
It is within the enterprise zone and therefore would be eligible for, um.
It's an eighty percent reduction of taxes for the first five years, and then it goes seventy, sixty, fifty, forty, thirty for the next five years, so that's to be taken into consideration when calculating that, that revenue stream.
I won't be doing the calculation, but I assume you'll factor in that, I think. Um, but I would be curious to see those numbers. Um, I'm curious how often the garbage truck will be planned for pickup?
It's, uh, three times a week.
Three times a week, and do you think it's possible to arrange that so it's not in the morning hours, so that's maybe after eleven, but before three or something like that, so it's not disturbing neighbors during what would be considered inconvenient times? Um, uh, you know, I, I've tried, I've driven by your car wash a fair bit on Wisconsin Avenue, so it must, it must be that I've driven by on those six or seven days when there's a line, I've seen a line much more often than.
Outside?
Yeah, out into the street onto Wisconsin Avenue, so, you know, I, I want to believe you if you say there won't be a line more than six or seven days here, but I guess the question is, if there is a line, what can you actually do to change your practices so that we don't have the line, so that we don't have to spend city resources having a police car there ticketing people? Um, so what can you do operationally other than closing at certain hours, because I'm sure that will really hamper your economics and your business, so.
I can produce, uh, that you know exactly how many, uh, days there was a line there that I can provide you with that information, what days they were.
Well, I think the question is more.
I understand your question.
Yeah.
For us, it's, uh, the only thing we can say is that, uh, that it's like in, uh, in, uh.
We probably could have to make.
Montgomery County has a Rockford for, for, uh, one car wash, uh, a, a sign saying it's prohibited to, to stay, because for us it's very difficult to come to the client and say, you know, you need to go, there must be some kind of, uh, official which, uh, sign that would say, there's no way that people can park on the street and, and, um, there is a sign in, in, in.
I would suggest in terms of, uh, trying to mitigate that, there's a gas station that, um, they could probably make some kind of arrangement that allows them to, to, to access or utilize, the gas station has some amount of parking spaces that is not totally used. I remember when I first, when we, when I first visited the site, um, the gas station owner actually, he was, he, you know, he basically, I thought that it was all green space belonged to Mr. Joseph, and he came and said, oh, no, 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 that part is mine, and so there's still going to be green space, uh, we probably can, it's a kind of an arrangement with him.
But see, it's a walkaway, I think, that is going from, that the city of Tacoma has planned to go along the.
The edge.
Uh, the edge, uh, that goes to the back of, of Sligo Creek, so I, I don't think it will sort of be possible to, to, we don't want to use Sligo Creek exactly, the, the, I think the best alternative is to have a, a sign that is, that in fact stops.
Yeah, but we, we can put a sign up, which I, I appreciate the suggestion, but likely people are going to ignore the sign unless there's a police officer there who frequently writes tickets, so that's just.
What should I do up the street in, in New Hampshire?
Right, which, which costs the city money, and since I think the majority of the revenue goes to the state.
Hundred percent of the revenue goes to the state.
You know, so it's just, it ends up being a cost on our part, so.
Yeah, I understand.
I, I think we all see the inherent problem here, and I think it would be good to try and think of some solutions around that. Um, another question for the city.
The good thing, so, sorry, just interrupting, the good thing is that, uh, Wisconsin Avenue is the two lanes, uh, and it has parking down the street, uh, they could reduce that problem by just taking the parking away during certain days, but they keep it like it is, like you have seen it, and, uh, I think there are more lanes on, on New Hampshire, and it's, it's a separation in the middle, uh, that, that makes it cars wouldn't get from the other side, we have the problem that cars come sometimes from the left and the right, they go into the.
Um, then I have a question for city staff, is the storm water management plan like most based on a ten-year flood?
Yes.
Yes.
So in the event that we have a.
Twenty years.
You know, a, a higher than the products or whatever it is are running into the stream?
Uh, it's, this, I believe that the storm water management system is really just to handle the runoff and the impervious surface, and is separated from the other system.
So you think the, 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 the water from operations actually goes to the sewer system and then has to be treated by WSC?
I'm going to have to check with the city engineer, but the plans that I saw seem to, this, the filtration system that's on the plan seems to refer more to the parking lot runoff and the roof runoff than, um, the operation.
Filtration.
The operational runoff is, if, if, if I heard correctly, um, I think we were just dealing with about ten to twenty percent of the, of the addition of the runoff from operations, um, the storm water management issues were just basically roof, if we're now going to be putting in a green roof, that reduces the.
Yeah.
That, that significantly.
So last comment, I just want to say thank you for considering Tacoma Park as a place to invest your money and do your business, I know we have had a series of questions, obviously, a, a community that cares about the environment a great deal and quality of life for our residents, so, um, you know, I think those things need to be taken into consideration, but I do thank you for your, um, your interest in investing in our community.
Thank you very much.
And I've just got a quick question or two, um, my, my sense on the, on the, the days when there is traffic, when there is backup into the right lane of New Hampshire Avenue, uh, unless it's rush hour, and I'm not sure what happens there at rush hour, but I know that when I get to that point, that lane is, is about to become right turn only onto Eastern, so that a lot of the traffic is moving out of that lane into the other two to continue on down into the district, so that I know whenever I drive that way, I'm never in that lane, so there, so there may be some problems with, uh, rush hour where people are, a lot of people are turning right onto Eastern and want to be in that lane, but it's, it's not a, it's not a general traffic lane a lot of the time, and in fact the, the charrette and vision that the city had was that we were trying to get it reduced to two lanes there, so, uh, that might mitigate some of the potential problem. Um, and I just wanted to double check from the plans that we saw, it appeared that, um, the, the traffic, that the traffic impact is only on New Hampshire, not neighborhood at all, because there's no access.
Right.
Just like mill. Um, and that the city right-of-way is adjacent to, would be adjacent to the building, and that that's where the potential, uh, path to the neighborhood or whatever could be done.
There, there's currently no right-of-way there, any land would have to be dedicated or, um, or purchased.
So it's not a right-of-way?
It's not a right-of-way, it's, uh, but it's a master plan recommended acquisition.
And who currently owns it?
It's currently owned by the same property owner that owns the property.
The gas station.
That the gas station's on, which is separate from the gas station owner.
It's a separate parcel.
The property is leased by the gas station.
So there are separate parcels and.
Yes.
Right.
But the same ownership.
Yeah.
Right, and so, and so that, there's the demarcation runs right alongside this property.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, just one, one final one.
Oh, um, and Councilmember Snapper.
Well, you guys would, um, ask all the questions I was going to ask.
Okay, feel free to jump in and go, hey, hey, I have my hand up.
Okay.
Yes, the, the current, uh, car wash on New Hampshire Avenue, while there has been some issues, especially on weekends, on nice days, Saturdays and Sundays, from mid-morning until early afternoon, it, it is just those two days on very nice days, the rest of the week is more than, more than manageable, uh, and we have had agreements with that property owner to have a person in their employ come out to the curb and wave away or have the car is circled, or come back later, and, and it did work for a while until we stopped insisting on it, and now I notice lately it's sort of back to where it was before, um, so that's one concern. Uh, the other, uh, point is that while I'm certainly sympathetic to those people who are disappointed that the charrette has not produced, uh, something different than a car wash, given that particular piece of property bracketed by gas stations and a little further up automobile parts store, it's unlikely that we would attract a Pottery Barn or a Williams Sonoma or Legal Seafoods in, in that particular, uh, plot, I think we'll, we'll get them, uh, businesses like that will come later, but probably that's going to be a little micro area where automobile services may be all that will, will be attracted there. Uh, so, you know, that, it doesn't bother me that, that what you're proposing i- is not some of those other things that I know the neighbors hope will be attracted there at some point, but I, I think that what, what we can encourage you to do is make certain that your plans reflect a, a model kind of car wash, one that is, that is not the usual run-of-the-mill box with the sprinklers, but something that residents can point to and say, this is what creative people could accomplish when they came together.
The kind, the kind of thing that's, I don't know if you guys have been to Hilton Head Island, where you can't distinguish McDonald's from, so, because it's, it's all planned, and, you know, you, you take a second look and say, oh, but, and I think that's what you, what you're getting at.
Right, and that car wash on Connecticut near Albert Marle is a very interesting, it's sort of a retro nineteen-fifties with the aluminum siding and such, and you really have to take a double take, it's a very attractive structure that doesn't say, I'm a car wash, it says, I'm an interesting looking.
It's only the backup that's always in the street that says it's a car wash.
Exactly, but it is an unusual building, it is attractive, it does seem to fit in with the neighborhood.
And if I can just ask one quick last question of Alana, the, my recollection is that there are some, uh, uses like this envisioned in the plan in that general vicinity?
Correct, uh, one of the recommend, one of the plan recommendations was to move car, to cluster car-oriented businesses that really live off of the traffic that's on the avenue to the intersections, um, I think it envisioned more on the south side of the, of the intersection so that you could directly access it up, um, if, if as proposed a boulevard is constructed along New Hampshire Avenue, this would end up being, um, within, would be accessed a block ahead, uh, on New Hampshire Avenue, so it, so someone would have to decide, anticipate the car wash and come in ahead of time, unless there were to be an access on a future street for Orchard Avenue.
And how many jobs will you create in there? And how many jobs will you create in there?
Would be basically the same as we have at the car wash presently, which is about 25.
25.
Okay. So that in the, if the vision for the boulevard were to actually happen, the, the future problem for the overflow days would happen on the, basically the side access piece, not on the main piece, given the location?
I just wanted to give one more idea of, of traffic flow. The days that we have the problem days are basically the days that, or you have a, a situation where you have a lot of snow that has fallen and then, and that happens during the winter. And then the months of April, May, where there is one of the months that is very, there is a lot of traffic. And these seven days happen during these period. After May, there is no month that, that will happen. So if from, from June onwards to December, there will never occur that problem, that traffic problem. So that is what I would like to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It has been a pleasant experience for me.
Thank you very much.
I trust that I will see you guys again soon.
And we'll take a short break and then we'll come back for our budget work.
I would like to, just one thing, to invite the, the persons, our neighbors to visit the other car wash and see what it is, that they have the opportunity to, to see that the noise doesn't exist.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Information, late in the day, I know I only got to start to go through it once I got here. So if you would like to step us through this information, and just so people know, my expectation is that we will spend, I don't know, I had originally been hoping to be finished by 9:30 tonight, given that it's 5:09, given that it's 5:09, I don't think that's realistic, but I would certainly like to finish by no later than 10:00. 9:45 would be even better.
And what do you hope to accomplish by that time?
Well, to have a common understanding of the information that's been presented, and if there are some easy options, or any additional information that's needed, have that clear, and then we've got Thursday evening to spend time on that we need. So if the city manager would like to step us through this.
Sure, I'll try to do so as briefly as I can. What I tried to do, and I do apologize for this information not getting to you sooner, I typed as fast as I could, there had been some discussion last Thursday evening about kind of budget variances over the years, so one of the things that's included in the supplemental information you received this evening, is I had gone back and looked at in some detail where those variances occurred in fiscal year 2007, 2008, and what we're projecting for 2009. As I had suspected when we talked about this briefly Thursday evening, is at least a good chunk of those variances was attributable to the way that the city handles the contribution to the equipment replacement reserve, as I mentioned at that time, it's budgeted as an expenditure for transparency purposes, however, it's really just a transfer between unrestricted and restricted reserves, so there's always a variance that shows up in the audit reports for that reason. We have historically also budgeted 2% of revenues, known as the unappropriated reserve, because I think this council, during my five years with the city, has always tried to be fairly conservative about allocating monies from that, there's usually monies left over at year end from that source as well. And then each year certainly there have been some savings in the personnel-related line items. One of the things, as I noted in the memo, and I can certainly go into this with some detail perhaps with the assistance of Suzanne and Yvonda, we have tended to see savings in personnel for a number of reasons, certainly, like if you go back to '07, where a number of the savings occurred in police, that was a time where we had a number of vacancies in the sworn officer positions, we also had a vacancy for much of that fiscal year in the chief of police slot, that was when Cindy Kramer left and Chief Recuci joined us in February of that year. We've also seen historically some vacancies in certain occupations, where when we did the market study that was presented to the council in March, those positions were found to be significantly under-market in some cases, so I think that's sort of is borne out as I look through the years and where I thought back in terms of where vacancies have occurred. Our police staffing has been relatively stable, I think in part due to the implementation of the take-home car program, so whereas we saw a lot of savings in that area going back to '07, we've not seen turnover since that time. And I guess my hope would be that with the implementation of the market study, hopefully to come sometime soon, and those adjustments in some of the positions where we're significantly below market, that we will not quite see some of the turnover that we had before. Certainly would be happy to answer any questions about this information, it was really provided more as background, given some of the discussion last Thursday evening.
If you could just, I want to make sure that I understand your sense of the areas, the departmental savings that were due to vacancies, your sense of kind of where we are now with those, you mentioned the classification study as part of it, and you mentioned the vacancies in the police department that we haven't had recently, is there a sense of a kind of a rolling average, a rolling number of what we should anticipate? The unexpended departmental funds would generally be, year to year, cutting all those, you know, kind of saying, well, aside from all of those, you can always expect, you know, just like you never get to zero unemployment, you always have some level of unemployment because people are between jobs, and kind of how that might relate to ongoing potential savings in the future, and whether the current economic conditions would change any of that?
That's a question actually that the human resources manager Karen Hampton and I have talked about, and I think it's somewhat more challenging, I think, when you have a relatively small workforce like we do, as opposed to something very large like Montgomery County, or as I mentioned when I was a budget analyst for the Kansas City Police Department, where you had such a huge scale that you could go back and look through the years with some pattern. I don't know maybe that I can answer your question definitively, certainly, I don't know that we're ever going to see, nor would any organization, 100% employment or positions filled 100% of the fiscal year, I think that's unlikely. In terms of trying to give the council some sense of what's likely to be, you know, reoccurring, I'm not sure. I think the one thing that Ms. Hampton has pointed out to me, is certainly with the downturn in the economy, there's a lot of indications that people are just staying put, that they're not as likely to change jobs and take the risk, that they move someplace that may not be as stable as traditionally local governments have been, though certainly there's a lot of local governments in metropolitan area that have not had stable employment. So I apologize, I can't give you a more definitive answer than that, but that's kind of the discussion I've had internally with Ms. Hampton.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wright?
I just want to make sure I understood the numbers.
Sure.
So in the memo particularly about the budget variances.
Sure.
Would it be correct to take the, take year 2007, for example, so you have the actual expenditure excesses were 1 times 3, 22921. If you subtract the $300,000, which is the replacement reserve, you subtract the 232075, which are the unbalanced, unexpended balance in both of those two accounts, and you subtract the projects that were basically rolled forwards, the 77,000 and the 75,000, just to be generous, could you say those are expended in some way? I come up with, I think the number six, 38,846. Is that then the true excess or unexpended in the budget, is that the right math to do?
I didn't try to account for kind of every single dollar, what I went back and did is looked at the kind of the biggest categories that I thought were there, I went back to the management discussion and analysis that was provided as part of the conference of annual financial report. I would say you're probably not far off, Councilmember Wright, I mean, in personnel, it was right around 579,000, so I think, kind of taking your math in that number, it's relatively in the ballpark.
And then the second question I have related to this is, have you ever seen, has a city ever decided to do something in their experience where, because the thing that I'm sort of struggling with is that this is, we're uncertain about these funds, right? Although in the last three years, if you do that same calculation, I think it's like 630, 932, and a million. But it is uncertain, I agree with you, you can't be certain about it. But we make the decision about how much we're going to commit to the capital replacement reserve upfront.
Correct.
So could we opt to say that we're not going to commit to that number upfront, and we'll wait to see what our excess is at the end of the year, and commit some of that at the end of the year, which would mean that we wouldn't instead get to the end of the year where we have this excess, which basically goes into a general fund, and we can't give it back to people because, you know, we don't have a refund method in our taxation system. So is that, have you seen that done before, I guess is the right question?
I have not seen that done, and I probably want to ponder it a little bit more. I think the potential downside, and I just use the word potential without thinking it through a little bit more, is what happens if the savings, if you will, or projects coming in under budget ends up falling way short of what that contribution to the equipment replacement reserve should be, if that makes any sense. I wouldn't have this concern about this council, but I can see potentially if the city started doing that, do you run the risk with a less financially disciplined council than this one, that contributions to the equipment replacement reserve just don't get made? And I think there's some evidence going, you know, a number of years back, where I don't know all the financial circumstances, but certainly there were many years based on my research, where either contributions were not made, or the amount that was made, quite honestly, was less than what was actually coming out of the reserve, so it was starting to go backwards. So that would just be my concern about not making that commitment upfront, but I wouldn't say that's a definitive statement that your idea wouldn't work.
And if I can just clarify your idea, Councilmember Wright, because for a while there, as you were talking about it, I thought you were going someplace that I think you didn't go, that I think would also be an interesting way to do it, which is, in the current proposed budget, there's a level of funding for the equipment replacement reserve, but it's stated to be not what it should be, and whether it would, whether we could have a circumstance where we put, in this current proposed budget, that amount in for the equipment replacement reserve, and then said, when we get toward the end of the year, there's the level that we didn't fund to, that we really should have, and use some of what you're talking about to do that, rather than starting from zero.
That would be another option, that was not what I was talking about, but that would be.
Right, right. Because then, because then in this circumstance, it would be, okay, we think we can put this much, it really should be more, but when we get toward the end and we have that other lapse, then we can, rather than putting it into the rollover, the carryover, say, okay, then some portion of it to be decided, you know, late in the year, as a budget amendment takes it and puts it in the equipment replacement reserve.
Sure, I guess, any other, turn, please, no, I listen.
I think I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay. What I was going to try to do is just walk through very briefly, I guess, what's in your packet, and I guess the thinking that went behind it, I know that you haven't had a significant amount of time to review this. The other, I guess, more significant lengthy item that is in your packet, basically addresses the council's discussion from last Thursday evening about ways to possibly reduce the tax rate. What I tried to do, I guess just for the purposes of taking information and kind of compiling it in one place, was to sort of recap from the budget transmittal message, kind of the categories of expenditures, maybe refresh the council's memory a little bit about what percentage of overall general fund expenditures each constitutes, any factors that might be impacting that, particularly when it came to personnel, and kind of offer some thoughts of areas that the council may wish to look at as it considers what the real property tax rate should be set at. I would mention that not everything in here, and I think it's very clear, especially in some instances, these are not necessarily my personal recommendations of items that the council may wish to eliminate or reduce from the budget, what I tried to do was actually go through and think of items that, at least from my perspective, were more discretionary in nature, and try to flag those for the council, with the hope that that might assist your deliberations. Obviously this memo is rather long, I assume you all don't want me to walk through these, but anyway, that was sort of the thinking behind it. If there were items that I thought should at least be highlighted, but I had some fairly strong feelings about whether you should even pursue it or not, I did try to note those in many instances, and an example of that would be that certainly one of the things impacting the proposed budget was the increased contribution rate for the police pension plan. What the contribution rate is based on in my proposed budget was what the actuary in fact recommended, certainly whether the council funds it, contributions to the plan at that level is discretionary, but I would certainly encourage you not to look at that area as a means of reducing expenditures in the tax rate, because all it does is buy trouble in the long run. Another example of that would be certainly you could not invest in your street infrastructure. Once again, I don't think that would be a wise financial decision on the part of the council.
Oh, your question?
Are we, it sounds like we're in the part where I'm the memo that starts general fund expenditures, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I had, I just had one thing, the fourth dot on page three of that memo says that if we close the community center on Sunday, it would, it would result in a savings in the recreation budget of $4,300. So if you take 50 Sundays out of the year, that would be about $100 a day that we would save, if I've got the math, or $80 a day. And I'm just wondering how you can fully staff a building on a whole Sunday for $80?
We've got two members of the rec staff who are here, including the director. Certainly there's a lot of Sundays when there are holidays that we close. I think most, Deborah, can correct me if I'm wrong, I think most three-day holiday weekends, we will close a facility just because we have minimal utilization, so that would include like Labor Day, Thanksgiving, usually a period of time around Christmas or New Year's, Memorial Day.
Well, let me ask it a different way, is that $4,300 in time that people, salaries, staff time, or, and is that overtime that they, that they have to be here in addition to their regular job, or is it some other kind of savings? I'm a little unclear on it, that's, I'm just, and I'm picking on that one, it's probably the smallest number in the whole country.
That's okay. Sundays were only open four hours, from 2:00 to 6:00, and that's, that's a minimum of two people staffing the building.
Okay.
For four hours. And we didn't, we did, we figured about 10 Sundays were closed due to holidays, so it was about 40 weeks.
Did you deduct rental income from it?
No.
So it's, okay.
Because we assumed that we could move people to the Hefner, so we didn't think there would be a huge decrease in rentals.
But it could be even less than that, because you could, you could lose rental income, theoretically you couldn't lose the rental income on Sundays, so it wouldn't even be $4,300 instead.
Well, let me, let me do quick math, 40, take off 10 days, so you have 40 Sundays left, and you said four hours on a Sunday?
It's $120 a Sunday for staff, it's $30 an hour, that's for two staff, for four hours, it's $120, and our recommendation is that most of the, because the Hefner is as big as, or probably bigger than the, our biggest room here, which is the Azalea Room, which is most, where most of the Sunday rentals are, that they could be accommodated at the Hefner.
So right now the Hefner is not open, but the community center is?
No, it is open, it's not, it's not fully used on Sundays, it's not staffed. And we currently have rentals on Sunday at the Hefner, it's not.
I'm not following your math, I'm afraid that if it's, if there's 40 Sundays, and it's eight hours.
No, it's four hours.
Times two people.
Right.
So 40 times eight is 320, right? 40 times eight is 320.
My math, math was $30 an hour, and it's four dollars, four hours, that's $120 a day.
30 bucks, 30 bucks an hour, times eight, because there's two people.
No, it's $15 an hour.
$15 each, okay, because so they're, they're low-level, I mean, inexpensive staff is doing it, so.
That's correct.
You've solved a bunch of problems here.
Got it, I understand.
I didn't even do the math.
I was surprised at that one, $4,000 to close it on every Sunday, I was just, that was, that's all?
I think you were thinking that it was open all day, so.
Yeah, but even half day, I'm still surprised.
Probably some other things that I just would like to call to the council's attention, as you have the opportunity to kind of walk through this more. One of the things that we have talked about during the budget process relative to the police department, is that several years ago, we actually went into an over-hire situation because we were expecting to have, we had about five officers at that time, who for various reasons were, it appeared would not be in our employment. At that point, I did utilize the discretion that the council gave me to over-hire, and we were over, have been in excess of our authorized sworn staffing of 41 by 1 since that time. As I had noted in the budget transmittal message, the proposed budget does include funding for all 42 positions, and as I mentioned, I believe it was during the police department budget presentation, Chief Recuci and I were in agreement that we would take the department back to 41 at the earliest opportunity to do so. Since we met last Thursday, the chief has been in contact with an officer who has, who has indicated his intent to retire later this summer, so it does appear that opportunity to kind of take us back to 41 will be in the very near future. So on page three of the memo that we've been walking through, I have noted that I anticipate that the savings from not filling that vacancy, I'm assuming the individual would be in our employment for approximately two months of the new fiscal year, would basically be about So I have gone ahead and put that on the updated reconciliation sheet that's at the very end of your packet. I have also included on that reconciliation sheet, the position we had talked about in terms of the crossing guard last Thursday night, that we had thought we could find a way to address that in a different manner, using our nuisance abatement officer, so that has also been added to the expenditure reconciliation list. The only other thing, I guess I just in particular wanted to call out for the council, and that would be on page, let's see, thank you, page six, has to do with the unappropriated reserve. As I had mentioned last Thursday, the city has historically budgeted 2% of revenues as the unappropriated reserve, and as I mentioned last week, in my opinion in reading the charter, I don't believe that is actually a legal requirement, such as is the case with the half percent of revenues. It's very clear that there is a general contingency account referenced in the charter that is equal to half percent of operating revenues, the charter is very clear that that is to be budgeted as an expenditure. That was not my interpretation relative to the unappropriated reserve, I did confer with the city attorney about that interpretation, and she agrees that it is not a requirement of the charter. So one of the options that I have noted on page six of this memo, is the council could elect not to budget the unappropriated reserve. In practice, what has sort of happened is we have anywhere from, depending on what revenues are, you know, something in the 300 and some thousand dollars, or in FY 2010, the unappropriated reserve that was included initially in the proposed budget was about If you don't have a very specific purpose in mind, such as we did in FY 09, where we were planning to budget the implementation of the compensation study out of that fund, essentially it just becomes a big pot of money sitting there with no specific purpose, and that most, in most instances, is returned to the general fund at the end of the year. And it somewhat gets to Councilmember Wright's, I guess, what I believe he was getting at when he was talking about projected personnel savings, is that it's great if it's there at the end of the year, but how do you return that in some way to the taxpayers? And I guess my suggestion to the council is that budgeting 2% of revenues without a specific purpose in mind, is essentially tying up a lot of money that you may not want to tie up. Obviously, if you do not budget anything in the unappropriated reserve, you still have the general contingency account that is required by the charter that you could draw upon, but certainly, if there's no unappropriated reserve at all, it does somewhat limit the council's flexibility to make adjustments to the budget during the year. I'm not saying that as if it's a bad thing, it's just a statement of fact, but that is one area that I would look at if I were a council member and had interest in reducing the tax rate.
Any council member, Clay?
My question is about the first paragraph, where it says that each half percent reduction of real property equates to a reduction of a general, of general fund revenues of $95,402. Last week when we talked about that, of course I want to make a clarification, that we're talking about a homeowner doing a tax cut that was for the homeowners, and that was targeted to the homeowners, and my impression is that right now, the taxes, the taxes are the same for, across commercial properties and the homeowner properties, so does this, and then Bruce made a clarification of what I said, where, where, where he said, single family homes, and I, I thought later, I realized later that that's, I actually meant to include condos and the tax.
All residential property.
Yeah, that people own and also live in. So do you have a figure on what it would be to do that targeted to the homeownership properties, would it still be $95,000 for each half cent?
Let me kind of break down how we arrived at the $95,402, and if I can kind of back into your question. I think the council probably will recall that for railroad and public utilities, as well as personal property, and I still need to answer whoever's question it was about whether or not this was a prescribed legal requirement, but most jurisdictions have budgeted railroad and public utilities and personal property at two and a half times the rate for real property.
Remembering that personal property is business.
Is business property.
And did you say railroad?
Railroad and public utilities, it is, it's a way of basically taxing, Pepco, there's right-of-ways that are owned by railroads and things like that, so it's actually a class of property that exists all across the country, when we're talking about.
I mean, we could tax Pepco and WSSC separately from everybody else, why don't you tell us that four years ago?
Wait a minute.
Wow.
Do we tax them now?
Yes, we do.
And we could raise their rates separately, is that true?
You would, you cannot, you cannot single out utilities, but I think you could, I need to figure out what the, I'm sure there are some legal boundaries before Councilmember Clay gets too much more of a gleam and froth.
If I can remind.
Taking me a little bit nervous there.
If I can remind folks that all property used to be taxed at basically that higher rate, because property taxes were based on 40% of assessed value, and then the state changed the system, I don't know. the state changed the system, I don't know, I'll say six, seven, eight years ago-
Hundred percent.
-to a hundred percent of assessed value, but that only changed for, um, real property. It didn't change for these other taxes. So the other taxes-
They're assessed at full value.
There used to be parity in the rate, and it was only the residential ones that, that went to the hundred percent and changed. And that's, that's why that relationship is what it is.
But on this, on, uh, council member woman Clay's point about the, um, uh, the energy taxes, I mean, there are some who would say that we ought to tax things we don't want, right? That, that's what a tax ought to be for, the things that we don't want. That's the essence of green taxation. You try to tax things you'd like to get reduced. And so, we all want to reduce energy, so let's tax the heck out of energy and, uh, and, uh-
I'm sorry I interrupted you. The thought of taxing WSSC was too technical. Please, please refer.
So the ninety-five thousand, four hundred and two dollars, and Yvonda, if I misspeak, just shoot me a dirty look and come up to the table, um, because she probably is much more the expert in this area than I am. Um, what we did is we basically looked at the impact of reducing the real property tax rate by a half cent, and then by extension, what was the impact on railroad and public utilities and personal property if that rate was lowered by a one-half cent, and then, kind of, multiplied by two and a half. So that's, basically, we took the half-cent reduction and then cycled it through the other classes of property that is taxed, if that makes sense.
Kinda.
Kinda, okay. I, we can actually send you a spreadsheet that shows the calc, the actual calculation.
Does this make it worse?
I have one, but, okay. Um, if I can remember the rest of your question.
Well, so if I can just jump in there for a second.
Sure.
So that, I haven't thought through the ramifications of it, but we could just reduce a half cent and not do the two and a half multiplier.
Correct. I mean, I think one of the things that the council sort of needs to think through, particularly in a, a tough economic climate, is, um, I certainly understand the appeal of just focusing on residential property owners, um, but certainly businesses are struggling as well. One of the challenges, I think, and this goes back probably a couple of years, when, um, now county council member Mark Goulwitz sat on this council, was, one, he'd asked for a breakdown, um, of real property and trying to get a sense of what was commercial and what was actually residential, and Yvonda went through considerable gyrations, talking to people at the state and from the county, and it, it's just very, we, we were, I think, fairly unsuccessful about trying to get that breakdown. I think if you want to target, um, and I, I think it's probably, it's residential property that basically qualifies as your primary residence. This was this idea of this income tax offset that we had talked about a little bit last week. Um, I have done some additional research, um, since last Thursday, had talked to the Assistant Finance Director in Rockville, and also someone at Montgomery County about how that gets implemented. Um, I think it's something that the city may want to give some consideration to going forward, but as far as fiscal year two thousand and ten, it's too late to do it. It basically takes a fairly long lead time to get your own municipal property tax build program. The county has, um, is getting ready to go through a conversion on their property tax billing software, and because of that, they've already sort of gone through all the testing and everything. I mean, other than plugging in our rate, basically everything's smooth, and they didn't want to, understandably, were unwilling to make the last-minute change for fear that it wouldn't be implemented correctly, so, um, it's kind of off the table for fiscal year two thousand and ten, but I will go ahead and get some information to, to, to you about that, because I think it's something you may want to consider, just because it's a, a fairly clean mechanism to target, I think, the kind of tax relief that Councilmember Clay is alluding to. I think what I need to do a little bit more research is, um, what, apparently what they do is they pick out of the database, um, properties that are flagged as being basically primary residences that are residential. I, I would assume that would extend to condominiums and things like that, but I'd like to talk to someone at the county in a little bit more detail to make sure that that's doable. Can I answer your question, Councilmember Clay? We kind of went around the block, so I wanted to make sure I actually got to it.
I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Um, the two other item, a couple other items that are in your packet, um, last week we had talked a little bit about some of the staff positions that were vacant as of last Thursday. Um, I have updated that in light of the council's discussion regarding, um, kind of your continued support for the resolution that was passed in two thousand and seven, and the fact that, um, you did not want to really make a move to non-benefited part-time staff or the use of contractual labor strictly as a cost-saving measure. Um, the positions that came off the list that I had given you last Thursday were essentially those in public works. Uh, there was an equipment operator, and I believe two sanitation technicians. There was also an administrative support position in police, um, where that would have been the case. So those positions essentially were taken off this list. Um, the ones that remain, and I know there were some comments made by several council members about not wanting to eliminate certain positions on this list, but there didn't seem, from my recollection, a majority council decision or even discussion of some of these items, so I just wanted to leave the memo relatively intact. Um, I did add that, right after we gave you this memo last Thursday, one of our police dispatchers had, um, submitted a resignation. She's going to become a police officer for this Maryland State Police. Um, I did go ahead and include it on here, just for the interest of being, um, transparent and disclosing it, I think, given the council's comments about how you wish to structure your workforce and, truthfully, the essential nature of police dispatch work, I don't think it's really an opportunity that, um, we can look to for cost savings by eliminating that position, but I did want to just go ahead and flag that for you. Um, I've also included a little bit more information in this memo, um, about the recreation specialist position, because there had been, um, some discussion about this last Thursday, um, and Ms. Hayden and I had talked about it, and wanted to share some information with you about that. Uh, the two last pieces of information included in the memo, um, or this kind of packet, um, had to do with the sustainability coordinator position. I think it's been called different things, but it was a position that was proposed to be added, um, I think specifically by Councilmember Wright. Um, Councilmember Robinson had asked if I could maybe put together some thoughts about how the functionality of the position perhaps could be achieved, um, without adding a position. Um, so these were just some admittedly very cursory thoughts, um, that I wanted to share with the council after talking with the deputy city manager, as well as the public works director. Um, certainly, we can kind of expand on this, but at least I wanted to get something in your hands this evening to at least start thinking about. And then the very last item, um, in the supplemental information packet that was distributed kind of in pieces, uh, throughout the day, this was actually something that you did not get until this evening. Um, I updated the general fund expenditure reconciliation list. If I overlooked anything that any of you have suggested, please, you know, my apologies, um, just let me know that. Um, the two, I guess there were three primary changes. One was, um, to note the vacant crossing guard position that I think we've all agreed, um, could be eliminated. Um, the police officer vacancy, taking us back to a sworn staff of forty-one, was added to this. And then the third change, um, that you may note is, um, an addition in police of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars reflecting, um, the public works director's best assessment of the vehicle maintenance and fuel costs associated with the police fleet, and a corresponding reduction in public works. This was something we had talked about, was actually trying, given the size of their fleet and the financial impact, um, actually trying to show that in the police department budget rather than public works. Um, so, in a nutshell, I guess that's what you've either gotten in bits and pieces or got this evening when you arrived.
And maybe I missed it, but at the top of that sheet is the addition on the employee health insurance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that would be the fourth change. Um, since, um, I guess on Friday, um, our broker contacted me to let me know that, um, so far with, in their discussions with that, no, they were successful in getting the renewal rate down from the proposed nineteen point eight percent to seventeen, um, so at least we've made some progress. So that figure had previously been a hundred and two thousand. Mayor, you were correct about that. Based on that reduction in the renewal rate, I amended that a hundred and two thousand to the sixty-nine, five, four, five. Um, we are still working with our health insurance company, getting other bids and talking to our bargaining units, um, but that's, that's a figure that's currently in play at this time with the current health insurance provider.
Um, maybe at this point, if anybody has any observations, questions, requests for additional information, requests for clarification, and if I can start with one, uh, back on page five of the, uh, expenditure memo, under miscellaneous, there's the item about the, Councilmember Clay suggesting that the twenty-five thousand of the fifty thousand allocation for the, uh, affordable housing program, uh, be used for the indicators project, and that kind of left me thinking about the other twenty-five, and kind of what, if anything, we anticipate using that for, where we are on that, how, whether, quite frankly, my thought was, gee, is that another twenty-five thousand that we can say, well, next year?
I, I think that's clearly a matter of policy for the council. I think one of the challenges, I think, the housing and community development staff has been, is just due to, kind of, the press of other business and scheduling, that they have been wanting to come forward for some time and, kind of, have a conversation with the council about the affordable housing policy and action plan. That just hasn't taken place. Um, you know, I think to date, what would, those funds would be expended on has been unidentified, um, or the staff has a number of ideas, but I think whether or not the council is interested in those or not, I think is a different question, and I think we won't know that until you talk about it. That's certainly something that, um, you know, is discretionary, and you could either choose to eliminate the entire fifty thousand dollars from the budget, or you could choose to allocate half of that to the indicators project as proposed by Councilmember Clay, and I believe others also weighed in on that.
And, and I didn't know to what extent people feel that the indicators project would help in our understanding of where we wanted to go on affordable housing programming or policy, and it's not something we have to discuss a lot right now, but it just brought up that question. We could discuss it now, or we could say, we'll think about it, and that'll be part of the discussion on Thursday.
Would it be helpful for the council if, um, probably, probably be either Sarah or Linda Walker put a few thoughts in an email and sent them to you about the affordable, possible affordable housing initiatives, or is that something that the council doesn't feel it needs to make a decision?
Would that be helpful for anybody?
That you don't need anything?
Sounds like, don't need anything, does anybody want to do any discussion on that one now, or does, do people have other questions?
I thought it would be helpful.
Oh, we have one that says it would be helpful.
Okay.
Other observations, questions, areas?
Has, has, um-
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. Um, does staff have a position on the effectiveness of, uh, the community indicators data or techniques as they've gone through, a, as they've interacted with staff to this, to, to date?
I have not specifically discussed that with Sarah and Linda, who have been the staff, who have, um, probably been most closely linked to that project. I'd be happy to get their input and share that with the council as well.
Okay, thanks.
Linda Walker's been coming to meetings.
Yeah.
She's been very, very helpful in supporting results.
Councilmember Wright?
Um, so I wanted to, first, a question about, I guess it's under miscellaneous, page six. You were talking about, um, if we don't have the, um, the reserve, the unappropriated reserve, and, um, then we would have less flexibility on the budget, although we still can go into-
Yes.
-the general fund reserve, uh, unappropriated reserves-
Correct.
-and make budget amendments and tap into that money if we were a dire situation or if we chose to, yes.
Yes, that's correct, and by saying there's less flexibility, I didn't mean to imply that was necessarily a bad thing. Um, in fact, I actually think it can be a positive, because I do think that if you have a, now, you say this is not, this is just a general comment, not necessarily aimed at this council, but if you have a huge pot of money just sitting there, I think there can, it's a very easy thing to do, I think, to transfer money out, to start going down a path of doing things that you had not really planned, um, and, truthfully, with a, an undisciplined elected body, quite frankly, it can almost become a slush fund, and that, that is not the way at all any council during my tenure here has ever used it. It's really only been tapped when it's been absolutely necessary. Um, but I think Councilmember Wright is exactly correct. The council could go back through the budget amendment process and increase overall expenditures. Um, what happens with the unappropriated reserve is you can essentially transfer within accounts, but the bottom line expenditure total remains unchanged. I think certainly as, as a political body, and once again, I'm not saying this is at all a bad thing, having to pass a budget amendment that increases overall expenditures certainly has some political downsides, and I think most elected bodies would be much more hesitant to do that. And I guess that was what my comment about, um, probably providing maybe a stronger financial management structure, but, truthfully, by forcing that to happen, I, I don't think, I think that may actually be a positive-
Right.
...than compared to the prior practice.
Just, can I make sure that we all understand what the other reserves would be if that one went away?
Um, by the charter, there, well, there's a couple, probably two primary options. Um, the charter does require the budgeting of a half, a half a percent of operating revenues for that year, and Yvonda may be able to help me out, but I think that figure is roughly, it's, that a hundred thousand, maybe slightly more than that? Does that sound about right?
It's, it's about one thousand.
Right, so, I mean, that, that would be in the budget, um, and when we, in fact, you know, tapped that general contingency account this year, um, when we needed to address the third-floor air conditioning problems, we deferred a capital project and then used that, um, I believe, as part of the supplemental funding. There is, by the charter, also established what's known as the emergency reserve, um, if you may recall, that was, um, cited as part of your restricted fund balance in your audit, in your comprehensive annual financial report. The charter has fairly specific language about, um, what that can be used for and, and the mechanism to tap that. It's never been tapped during the time I've been here, um, probably because we've had these other reserves to go to, but that is available. It's not a significant chunk of money, it's, I think roughly about maybe three hundred and thirty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in the emergency reserve. Um, if you went to that, then you would be increasing overall expenditures.
So, so if there were emergencies that needed to be tapped, there's one for a hundred and one for three hundred-
Right, and then I think-
That's, and, and both of them are more restricted than just the unappropriate?
Um, I would say probably the most restricted is probably the emergency reserve. I think it has specific language. I think in addition to-
I think you have to declare the emergency.
Yeah, I think it has to be more of a declared emergency. I think typically, um, just by its very nature, you're going to be talking about, you know, a bridge going out, or, I mean, something fairly significant.
And the example I provided was-
Bad example, I know. It's one that happened in another community I worked in, but it's the one that came to mind, and then I think-
And the, the example I provided that we, that we last did was the Bobcat in the snowstorm.
Right, and, yeah, and then I think Councilmember Wright alluded to the third option, which is there is unrestricted fund balance, that is there, um, and certainly the council could choose to withdraw monies from the unrestricted fund balance, um, you know, increasing overall expenditures is the way it would be handled, uh, through the budget amendment process. Um, so that's certainly there if you needed to tap it for a critical need.
And that's, and that's in the range of?
Oh, I think by year-end, we were projecting, what, about four point, four point six million, Yvonda, is that correct?
Well, it's really about four million if you take that to the designated-
Okay. Fund balance for the next year's expenditures, right. But, I mean, there's certainly some monies there. Hopefully, we wouldn't have a multi-billion dollar emergency.
There's significant, significant money to tap if necessary.
Yes, I, I, I think the city has sufficient reserves in a variety of places should there be an emergency that requires it.
Taking, taking this away doesn't leave us better.
No, it does not.
How much is it?
Four hundred and twelve.
Yeah. Truthfully, I think I should go through, um, I mean, there's certainly a, a number of options that I tried to lay out here, um, you know, Yvonda and I have talked about this issue probably since I got here. Um, truthfully, it was, it was a, a long-standing practice in the city. I have continued it mainly because when I first got here, um, quite frankly, making a radical change in financial policy just didn't seem to be quite the way to go as a, as a new city manager. Um, you know, I think after having been here and watching the way the council, I think, has, you know, used it very judiciously, I think what has ended up happening is, it's a lot of money being budgeted, that quite frankly, most of it falls back to fund balance at, at year-end, and I think this gets to the point that many of you have raised about, you know, not wanting to basically bump up expenditures any more than you have to so that you're setting an appropriate tax rate. Um, so I, I, I would say probably out of, besides some of the personnel, you know, issues that we've talked about, where staff has gone ahead and put those monies on the reconciliation list, I think this is certainly an area that the council may want to have some discussion about.
Councilmember Wright?
I want to follow up on another item that I don't see additional information on, which has to do with the, um, the rental fee. Sorry, I remember in the conversation-
Right.
-with Sarah, that whatever fees we take in need to be used by the rental licensing process, and I know she's going to go back and calculate to make sure-
Yeah.
-that she had it correct, but there was also what I consider potential for a pretty significant component, which was that you can basically make the case that COLTA, the whole COLTA process is, if you didn't have a rental program, you wouldn't need that. And I don't, if I remember correctly from Sarah, that wasn't actually calculated into the cost of the rental fee. And so she said she was going to go back and look at that, and I know it's not a huge amount, but I imagine it could be, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. So I was wondering if you've done that calculation and could make the case for increasing the, the rental fee to truly cover the cost of providing rental.
She had to talk about that last week. What I had, what Jesse had done was to pull the calculations, Councilmember Wright, that had been provided to a prior council, so that Sarah could recall what the methodology was. Jesse has given Sarah that information. I'll touch base with her tomorrow and see where she's at on that. She was going to go through and update that. We have talked about, we have talked about it.
It'd be good if we could have that for, for Thursday.
Okay, sure.
That might represent money, again, that we could use to limit the amount of tax increase and potentially not give a tax increase. So.
Okay.
And I think I have one other question. Just a point about the sustainability position. I think I'm pulling a number that Councilmember Robinson has mentioned before. I like the idea of not, you know, of having city staff that have other roles taking on the sustainability role and the money would stay there. My one concern, I think, is the last area, which has to do with, to, you know, outreach and education. I think Councilmember Robinson had asked me that, like, the city's energy use is only four percent. The city government's energy use is only like four percent of the entire city. I can't remember if that number's, I don't know if that number's correct, if I remember it correctly or not, but you can imagine that the city energy's use is a relatively small percentage of the energy use of the entire population of the city. And my concern with this approach is that one of the things I thought the sustainability coordinator position could really do is help us make significant inroads with residents in changing their car footprints. And I would just be concerned that if it's something else that the communication office would do when we don't really even have the website correct yet, you know, it's going to be something that is not really going to get drawn properly. So I just bring that up for us to think about. And I guess the last point I would again make is that I think we have a sophisticated set of residents, and I think that you could explain to them what we're doing and, and reduce the, the amount of the tax increase, go dip into reserve funds that we have, and I think are likely to grow, because I would anticipate, if I were a betting man, that given of the last three years, we've been at six thirty, nine thirty, nine hundred and thirty-two, and one million in terms of under expenditure, that, that dipping in won't be as much as we actually think it will be, with the understanding that the, the tax rate may go up in the future. And also, I think, you know, we are starting to realize that as we look at the budget, there's some aspects that may not be sustainable. I think there's a question in all of our minds, if property assessments aren't continuing to go up and the economy is not booming like it did for a number of years, for a lot of people, not everybody, that it may not be sustainable for us to have budget increases of nine, or ten, or eleven percent every year. And so much, and so much is driven by personnel, that as a community, we may have to have a discussion and really make hard decisions about what we want to do, or don't want to do, or that we do want to have the tax rate continue to increase at that commensurate level. But I feel like that's something that needs to take place in a longer timeframe than the short budget cycle. And I think you could make the case that we're not going to increase taxes this year, a very small amount. We may be dipping into reserve funds, and we need to have a, start a conversation that begins early in the next fiscal year, and really get a sense from the community. If we have to reduce services, what would you reduce? Or are people really comfortable with, with the tax rate level? And given that the one other solution to that is the county's starting to rebate us fairly, I think that's unlikely, unless we're going to sue the county, which I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to, but it's probably not going to likely change soon. So that continues to be my perspective.
I don't disagree with you, Councilmember Wright. One of the comments, as some of you may recall, that I made in the transmittal message is, I think it's, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, and it's very unclear to me what's going to happen with our property values when we, you know, we go through reassessment. Certainly, I think there's an argument that could be made that those properties that are more inner suburbs, you know, near metro stations, you know, may maintain their values more than some of the, you know, ex-urban communities. And I think you're seeing that, especially in some of the, you know, far-flung Virginia counties. I don't know that that's necessarily going to happen with Tuchel Park, and I guess we'll all wait and see, but I would agree, and I think I made a similar statement in my budget transmittal message, that I think the time to start that conversation is before we get the reassessment values, and before we find that we have a problem, and, you know, have that conversation with the community when you have a little bit more time, and, and can actually get some feedback in terms of that. You know, I think it will be interesting to sort of see, you know, what's happening in other jurisdictions relative to market adjustments for pay. And the council's had some of those discussions about the floor that is in some of our bargaining agreements. And certainly Suzanne and I have taken close notes and know that that will be an issue to raise with the bargaining units when we go through negotiations. In terms of some of the sustainability issues, and I've not talked to, to Yvonne about this, and I, one of the things she always hates is kind of revolving loan funds because of some of the administration that's associated with those. But I did not put it in the memo that I gave the council this evening, mainly because Yvonne and I haven't had that conversation, but Darryl sort of had an interesting idea, kind of getting to Councilmember Wright's comment about homeowners and, you know, helping them become more energy efficient, is, you know, would it be feasible for the city, given our limited staff, perhaps to set up some type of revolving loan fund for people to make energy efficiency improvements in their properties, such as the installation of solar panels or something like that? And could the city, you know, either provide no interest loans, or low interest loans, or something of that nature? I didn't include it in this memo mainly because we, other than it having a concept, we really haven't talked about how that might work, what kind of funding might be involved, how we would administer. But those are some of the internal discussions we, that Darryl and I've had.
The, the county now has that program, right?
Right. But would the city want to do anything in that regard? I don't know.
Yeah, but I assume that county, the city residents will be eligible for that county
I would assume they would be, yeah.
And maybe we could also talk to the county about somehow administer, you know, if we wanted to do more, make more money available for Tuchel Park residents particularly, you know, with, could we, could we make that available through the county so that there's not an administrative burden?
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll come back to it. I, I didn't want to make light of it, but I don't think I have a full understanding of the ability to, to apply a tax to energy use. Is, is that something you'll do some research on and come back to?
We can do that, yeah. I don't know the answer. I apologize.
Okay. No, I didn't expect you to.
And if I can just add one comment on Councilmember, Councilmember Wright's observation about the more long-term discussion with residents, if we wanted to have that conversation in a different way about future tax rates and service levels and that whole conversation. I know that one time in the past, before I was on the council, the council kind of got to that point, and the whole council came up with a process where they went around and talked to neighborhood groups, or, you know, whoever, whoever wanted to invite them to come and have that discussion, and there were any number of ways that they put it together. And if that's something that people are interested in, I could check back with, I think it was Mayor Sharp at that point, see what they found that worked, what didn't, as just a starting point for a way to begin to have that conversation, and, you know, just get that as background, and then we could come up with our own ideas about what we might want to do.
And also, Mayor, as you recall, colleagues will recall, we did a community survey last year, and I think we learned a lot about where the community gave us high marks for the service delivered versus the tax rate, and areas in which improvement was needed. We need to go back, in my view, again, and ask some of those very same questions, hopefully in the new year, so we can compare the responses from the first survey with the second survey. And that, that's all part of the year-long conversation that should start immediately after this budget is passed, in order to identify, you know, areas where the city should continue to improve, areas that we had not addressed sufficiently in the view of the majority of citizens, especially in those areas of the city that clearly felt that they had some serious problems that the city up to that point had not responded to in the way that they believed we should. So that, that's all part of getting to the heart of the matter of what the city should be like, what services we should offer, and the extent to which tax cuts are, take a priority over the delivery of the services that we currently have. So I'd, I'd be a big fan of resuming that effort to gather the data and compare it with the previous year. And also, we might look at the debt that we presently have, the bonding that we had done in the past for roads and other things, to see if an accelerated payoff of some of that debt would be prudent, given our current situation. Retiring that debt would mean that we would have, you know, the interest that we have been paying for, for program, funding of programs, or for other alternatives.
I had gone back, I think it was Councilmember Wright, I believe, who had asked whether it was possible to basically refinance the existing bonds, perhaps on the community center. I did check on that. I think the earliest opportunity, those bonds had a, I think a, at least a ten-year period before they could be called, and I think the next opportunity is like two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, I think, was the first series of the community center bonds. We could go back and look and see if there's any other debt that's eligible for, for refinancing.
Right. And, you know, the streets are not looking all that great now, and thanks to, or no thanks, to WSSC and, and other events beyond our control. And it may be worth going back and, you know, looking at the streets again to see which ones, you know, need to be attended to sooner than later. And I remember it was proposed early in the budget for the public works folks, the acquisition of a device that would allow us to make our own repairs, and, and it might be worth considering putting that back on the table. Given the state of the roads now in some of the areas, and their deteriorating condition, I think some of the roads have deteriorated faster than the engineer's study of a number of years ago, on which this entire plan for rehabilitating and maintaining the streets was based. And, and at least in my ward anyway, the condition of the streets was and is a very important issue for people. And, and I don't, I don't know that we have the information to make decisions on now, but I would certainly suggest that we, we look at some short and longer-term measures to make sure the streets are in the condition that people want them to be.
Councilmember Clay.
I think that the Miller paper is in the current budget.
It is, yes.
It is?
Yes.
I thought it was taken out, but that's good. I'm glad it's there.
It was taken out last year.
Yeah, I, I put it as a option if you were looking to, I wasn't recommending it once again, but if there were things that were coming out of the general fund that were large ticket items that the council may wish to review, that was one of them. I think certainly, based on the conversation in a year ago, when the council did originally fund that piece of equipment, we just deferred the funding because of the problems with the air conditioning system upstairs. I think, as Darryl indicated, I think the payback period on that was relatively short, because we could do some work in-house that we're currently contracting out, so.
Councilmember Robinson.
It's, it's FY ten.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Clay had more.
Okay. Right, Councilmember Clay.
Okay. So looking at the different things that we, the puzzle of adding things and taking things out, and I think the positions that I would support taking out would be the forty-second police officer, the crossing guard, and the rec specialist. And I would support pulling the, the rest of the fifty thousand essentially for the affordable housing. And I would remind Councilmember Snipper that when we talked about this originally, it's not the only fifty thousand dollars that the city is spending on affordable housing. It's, it was a one-time pot that came out of the sale of the house.
Oh, yeah.
So it wasn't a continuing amount, and that we have committed the CDBG funds, I think of an amount of ninety-five thousand dollars in the budget this round for affordable housing. And there's a couple other areas in the budget where there's some funds for affordable housing, so we're, we're not stripping out affordable housing there. This is just kind of what, what we decided to do with the fifty thousand. And when it initially came up, I was, I think, the first person who suggested that we put it into the affordable housing fund, but it hasn't been used over the course of a couple of years, which is of no fault to the Department of Housing and Community Development. But my point is that at this point, when they don't have a plan coming forward with it, and we're looking for things to cut, I don't want to ask them to go come up with a plan in the next three days.
Good point.
You know, next year, if they have some great ideas for affordable housing, or some good things come out of the community indicators project, then we could revisit yet more funding, or maybe they could use some of the funding from the CDBG to do that, or keep it, it's that bill.
My guess is that Lynda Walker has some ideas. Whether or not the council still wishes to move forward, I think is a different decision, but-
Yeah.
Councilmember Clay, can I just clarify one thing? I just wanted to make sure-
Sure.
When you were talking about the fifty thousand dollars for affordable housing, were you still supporting taking a portion of that fifty for-
Oh, yeah, I haven't gotten to that part yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Didn't need to cut you off.
So the things that, no, so the things that I would include, then, that aren't currently in the budget, is the community indicators, the folk festival, the fifteen thousand dollars for the emergency services fund, the ten thousand for the pool, and the thirty thousand for the wind power, which is about eighty-five thousand dollars. And then it's questionable whether or not we will be able to draw down to seventy thousand on employee health insurance costs. But assuming that we were able to deal with the health insurance some other way, that would be two hundred and forty-two thousand in money that we pulled back from the budget, from the positions in the affordable housing fund, and eighty-five thousand that we put in, which would leave a net of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. If you-
Of savings?
Yeah, yeah, for, over what the budget is now.
Right.
If you added to that the four hundred and twelve thousand from the, what we now do for the unappropriated reserve, that would be five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. If you multiply the ninety-five thousand times four, which would be a two-cent reduction in the tax rate, that's eight, that's three hundred and eighty-one, six hundred and eight thousand, which leaves a hundred and eighty-seven thousand. You could do another, you could do another half cent off the tax rate and still pay for the employee health insurance if you had to, under that scheme. It seems like it's a little bit of everything. So that's pretty much, I guess, where, where I would feel comfortable. I have to say, though, that, you know, if we're not going to pull back on the tax rate, I certainly would want to make sure that we're doing something more than what we're doing right now. And I think going and improving the roads more, as, as Councilmember Barry suggested, I think would be one thing that would make a lot of constituents a lot happier. And, and I think there would be less pressure around some of these other component pieces. I had some meetings with folks recently. I just went to the Long Branch Sligo yearly meeting last night. No one came up to me and told me that they absolutely had to have their taxes reduced, and one woman said that while she would prefer to pay fewer taxes, it's not really killing her. What's really important to her are better services in the city, and particularly, she, she mentioned the destruction to her vehicle from driving over the, over the roads. I mean, to some, I'm about to have, I'm sure I'm about to have to replace the front end of my vehicle, and it's going to cost me a couple thousand dollars. I mean, one way we could save our folks' money is by repairing our roads so that they don't have to replace the front end of their vehicle, because this is going to be round two for me, and I've only lived in the city for six years, and never before, when I lived in any other place, did I ever have to replace the front end of my vehicle.
Is it our roads, Councilmember Clay, or state roads, or a combination?
I don't know. I just, you know, I have a giant SUV that I'm hitting problems, and it's starting to take a toll on my motorcycle, too. I mean, I could hear it when I'm, when I'm hitting roads in DC on my motorcycle. So I would just say that, you know, if we were going to do something with, with monies that are available, and there wasn't support for doing some of this other stuff, I think to find a way to, to pit money to fix our, our roads, and I don't think Palmer Lane has ever been paved. They would really like to have a paved service, and, and I think that would mitigate some of the, some of the pressure around some of the other items.
And just, on that score, don't forget that one of the conversations that we haven't had as part of the budget discussion, I guess until now, is the fact that we have the, the, set aside from the WSSC work, where for our streets, they weren't required to mill and overlay, but they paid for half of the cost- and overlay, but they paid for half of the cost of doing that in the future, and what would be required for us to do that would be coming up with the money for our half to match the half that's already in the bank. And I know that their half that's in the bank is reflected in the budget as a special revenue or something.
It's set aside as a restricted reserve as well.
So that potential is there to kind of amplify the work that's done with that added money.
Right. They're not going to pay for Palmer Lane, though, because it's never been paved.
That's correct.
You need to have a pony.
But there are roads that people might say need work that would be less costly to do because those other funds are there.
Right.
Let me check with Councilmember Snipper. Is there any, Councilmember Snipper, is there anything you want to add at this point?
No, I've agreed with the general festival people are going. It does seem like we can lower the tax rate by using the, I forgot what it's called, I want to call it the emergency reserve, as well as some other savings along the line of anticipated budget variance or whatever euphemism we're using, to the tune of a couple of cents on the tax rate in DC that really makes the most sense. I'd certainly rather tighten our budgeting than cut a position someplace. You know, tightening a budget is refining how we do things rather than actually cutting services. Just a general comment I have. And other than that, I'm happy with the information we've got and look forward to reading it in a little more detail and talking about it next Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted, if I could, just, one thing I would encourage the council as you sort of, kind of, start getting to the point of finalizing the budget, is I would just share with the council, and I put this in some of the written materials, that certainly, as Suzanne and I are talking to the bargaining units about raising co-pays, we have already started getting some feedback from the bargaining units, not surprisingly, that as they're listening to the council discussions, and they are, they're going out online and watching this, that when they see items that seem to be discretionary, they're sensing that there's a contradiction between Suzanne and I going to the workforce and saying, please increase what you're paying for certain aspects of your health insurance benefit, at the same time while they're watching, at least from their sense, the council engaging in discussions about adding discretionary spending. So I would just encourage you to sort of keep that in mind as that may limit our ability to get agreement from the units.
So that was exactly my point.
Councilmember Robinson.
I guess in the discretionary spending that I think is most appropriate is where it leverages, to use a hackneyed phrase, volunteer or other funds in the community to do things that we want to see done in the city. So I know that there's, I know that would, may not ring true, but that's where I would be coming from. On the looking ahead part, it's 2010, next year, and fiscal year 2010, and 1996. Who was on the council then, besides you, Mayor Williams?
A number of fine people.
I mean, at the dais right now, I think you were the only one. So that was when we had the Tacoma 2010 project, which was a planning exercise to develop a strategic plan, the purpose of which was to coordinate with the budgeting process. And we had, I think this is, this might be what you were referring to in your comments a couple of minutes ago, we conducted both focus groups and outreach sessions for each ward, for all six wards. And you spoke at Ward Three at that time, conducted the public presentation. And we developed lists of things that citizens wanted in each ward, and we had good turnout. Thirty, forty people in each ward come and spend a whole afternoon, write out all the priorities that they had, then star them based on their priority, their individual priorities. And all that material exists, it's online, and I'll send you a link to it. You might find it interesting reading.
And I was actually referring to an earlier effort that took place probably in about 1991.
Okay.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And Barb, I really appreciate the information you pulled together in such a short amount of time. I think it's very helpful, and I think something that, over the next day or two, prior to Thursday's meeting, I'll have a chance to get through and look through in the detail that you provided. Appreciate it. I certainly wasn't able to prepare for that before tonight's meeting. I also appreciate some of the discussions tonight about the in-depth discussions that some council members envisioned for beyond the budget, of how we can kind of prepare in advance for next year's budget and talk about, you know, what services the community really wants and where we can find savings for future years. Nonetheless, I think my focus is still for this year's budget that I think we need to reduce spending. Again, I appreciate the ideas, maybe drawing down some of the reserves, but I think reducing the expenditures is still important, and that's, again, the value of documentation that the city manager has provided us tonight, and I'll come back with specific opinions, as Councilmember Clay has already been able to lay on the table. I just had one question, and I wonder, Barb, if you could maybe remind me of what's in the budget for the community organizations and grants, and maybe the mayor can remind me of how we're approaching that. We had talked about changing that process and how we're going to change it.
Sure. I'll answer your question in two ways. There is $20,000 that is included in the non-departmental budget, which is for what we've been referring to as the Small Community Grants Program. This was grants that would not exceed $2,500. Beyond that, there is included in the proposed budget, grants to specific organizations. This would include the Old Tacoma Business Association, the Crossroads Farmers Market. There's some funding for Independence Day activities. I believe that is the extent, Councilmember Siemens, of the targeted funding beyond the CDBG projects.
Farmers markets?
Yeah, Crossroads, yeah.
And the way we had left it was that we were going to approach it as a two-pronged thing with the, kind of, the larger grants and the small grant process, that we were going to come up with refinements for, and that we had come up with the general format for the small grant process, but it was too late to implement it for this budget year. And so I think we had, we had $10,000 in this year's budget, and we essentially said, take that 10, add it to 10, and make it 20 in the opposed 2010 budget. Am I correct on that?
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we had left it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I'm generally supportive of what Councilmember Clay mentioned and that approach. I want to go back and look through and see if there's additional things that I think we might not want to spend money on, and also sharpen the pencil around the reserve aspect. And then the last thing I would just say is I just want to be very clear, I don't think anyone up here has suggested that we're going to give anyone a tax cut.
That's right.
So I think that was mentioned somewhere, that this idea that we're going to cut taxes and then have to cut services, myself included, I don't think anyone has actually said that we're going to give anyone a tax cut. It's all about talking about how much we're going to limit the increase on people's taxes.
And if I can just request that it would, I think it would be helpful, as we consider the additional information that we've gotten and the discussion so far, to the extent that all of us can come Thursday night with a reconciliation list, it might make it easier to kind of have a little negotiation and back and forth among ourselves about where we want to end up if we all have kind of put a list of numbers together with the additions and deductions, and we can get a sense of who's where and how many people are for certain things and.
And bring our lobbyists.
No, I wasn't suggesting that. And I think that will be a, hopefully, a fairly definitive discussion on Thursday evening. We're joined.